I didn't want to do that. Yeah, well, let me tell you what. I was not trying to reinvent the wheel. When through this, they are asking for us to do an ordinance and also a public hearing.
No, I called those guys. They don't care. Those were just in case. That's something that our court required. We don't have to. We'll just sort of buy by vote as we did in 2000.
Fine, fine. But when I saw that, I thought it better be ready so we don't delay anything. That's fine. Yeah, well, I already had it done. You know, I dictated, then I went to court, so I wanted to be ready for tonight. Okay, that's fine. I'm prepared. I've gone through it. I'm prepared to recommend counsel at this time. Thank you.
Shane officially graduated.
So what's the next, what's the next?
Do you have the cool times due?
I got self-appointed.
Ah.
Did you call your doctor?
No. Mister? You have to call him mister.
Keep that PhD dress?
Yeah.
It's a good feeling to get through two years, isn't it?
They had, mine was fixed online and in person. They had ceremony in person at Kane's. I watched it live. The culture there.
I wouldn't understand. Yeah, I'll tell them what you get back.
When they have kids, you have to feed them. You too, but a little bit.
Your priorities change a lot. Food and notes.
Airports, a lot of airport orders.
Can you hear me? Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on tonight's agenda is I need to announce we have an executive session Thursday to discuss a personnel matter. No final, nothing was voted on, and we did not come to a conclusion. And we had an executive session earlier this evening, again, for personnel involving the fire department. We met with them, and again, no decisions were made. Number three, approval of minutes. City council meeting minutes, July 10th, 2023. Council's wishes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion on the floor, properly second to approve city council meeting minutes, July 10th, 2023. Questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Reese Singer.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Bernardo.
Epstein.
Akaba.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes. And the work session meeting minutes, July 20th, 2023. Council's wishes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion on the floor, properly second to approve the minutes for the work session on July 20th, 2023. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Reese Singer.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Bernardo.
Yes.
Akaba.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes. Registry of invoices presented. Christopher?
So I have changed this a little bit. We list there the auto draft amount, $58,655.60. Notice of the standard utility bills that we get on a recurring basis that are taken out of our account. They may not coincide with our dates specifically. So we have those as an auto draft that you approve. We have the general fund, $293,098.98. And then if we have special funding, such as for our sewer plant, we have the Penn Vest funding, And if anybody would like a full and complete list of those check registries, send me an email, info@duboispa.gov, and we'll get you a PDF copy. Or give us a call, and we can get you a paper copy.
Council's wishes on the registry of invoices.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have motion on floor, properly second to approve the registry of invoices presented. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Reese Singer.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Bernardo.
Yes.
Akaba.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes. How about comments? Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Charlie McLean, Monroe Street. I was pleased to hear at the last council meeting that the budget for the city is sound. It's also announced that there's going to be a vote regarding contract with Comcast being its sole provider of digital media in the city. This, to me, is the same as a protection racket benefiting the city and Comcast, but unfortunately, not the citizens of Dubois. Let the free market be free. Let there be competition. This is the only way to get the best service for the best price. Having a contract with one entity being the sole provider takes away any bargaining power that consumer may have. The same scenario is going on for waste management. Please stop taking payoffs from companies to eliminate their competition for them. Will the next one be Giant Eagle or Martin's? The percentage of profits be the only grocery supplier in Dubois?
Any others? Yes.
Linda London, Harburger Avenue. This is not the same as what Mr. Mitchell was talking about with the CDVG grants, mine's grants in general. When a grant application is made to be used for a specific project, can the awarded grant money be switched at any time to another project once it has been approved to be used for the original request? Number two, who oversees that the awarded grant money is properly used for the originally applied for and approved project? And number three, upon completion of the project, is documentation made to the council that they in turn relay the information to the grant provider?
Yeah, I'll answer them in a question you can air up. Or you want to answer, and I'll air up. Okay, question? Go ahead. Question one. Once we get a grant, can it be switched? If we get a grant, okay, Christopher, go ahead.
So when we hit a grant, it's for a specific purpose and project. If we want to switch it, we have to go back to the grant awardee. So for example, if we're trying to do something in the park, and we will switch to a different project in the park, we need to get approval from the people that gave us the money. And at the completion of a project, there's an audit done by the people that give you the money. They track that you met all their requirements, minimum wage rates, insurances, US deal, whatever it might be, budgets, and then everything is closed out after that. They typically hold a certain percentage of that grant funding until they confirm you did everything correctly. So they do verify at the beginning and at the end that you did what you were supposed to do. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, two of them.
Okay.
You know, like the overseeing of the grants.
The award agency oversees how we do the grants. Council will vote on the payments we make for those projects, but they're not in overseeing the progress every day, checking out our certain like pay rules in US deal. But all of the grant, I should say, most of the grant awardees do oversee all the projects for us.
Because I think that does clarify somewhat because I don't think I'm mistaken when I say that I heard it said in here that money was take switched, you know, like for a certain grant. We as, I didn't know that, that you would then go back to the grant provider that they have to approve for you all to do that. So thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, we can't just switch it. We do have to get approval from the funding agency to switch it.
Thank you.
Yep.
And that too, if I may. Certain grants are per certain things that may not be used in other areas. So depending on how the grant's written, you got to stay within those parameters.
Yeah, even if we switch, if we had a grant for recreation, we can't switch it to road rehab. It would be another recreation project, I think. Is that where you're going, Jimmy? Yes. Yeah. But even if we switch within the same parameters, we have to get approval to do this.
Thank you.
I believe that's also noted in our audit, isn't it? Our yearly audit?
They do look at those, yeah. We have single audits for specific projects.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Nasuti, this question's for you, Chris. Hey, I posted a comment about our last city council meeting, I think about the week of July 10th, and a former city councilwoman commented, and she said, well, we were all offered attorneys in the event that the AG or Hearn's attorneys wanted to meet with us. Said that we wanted to pay this bill. Does that part of the $274,000 that we paid? And if it is or isn't, would you, the city, be willing to show us who has been interviewed and who we paid to have those interviews done with?
So of the $275,000, it was not all for Hearn's legal attorneys.
Okay.
There was people in the city government as well.
I just thought it was strange because it took all this time to learn that. I never knew that in all the meetings I've attended. And yet, it's the former city councilwoman who resigned because she cared about the city enough to say, Michael, mine were paid for.
Yeah.
I just find it odd. I'm wondering if you will release everybody who was interviewed and who their attorneys were.
What's that? Okay.
It's sworn out.
Okay.
So it's, just to be clear, Mayor, it's letter and, it's part of the indictment?
That's correct.
So we don't know, other than what Shannon told us, because she obviously broke her own confidentiality to some extent, is what you're saying. Like, it's not going to be released, is what you're saying. I just find it interesting, just a comment, because I was shocked that she posted that and said she had been interviewed. Curry Express had never reported that. The city council never told us. I've talked to many of you, and I've never heard it one time. Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions?
I just, the trailhead. I was at the Sandy Township meeting for the DCED, and they were talking about it possibly connecting to, like, up towards Spider Lake on their end.
Okay.
So if the city would connect it from, like, what, the Y out through what I call Larkie Town, would that be, like, paved?
Yes, it would be paved.
Okay. And so then, like, crossing at Dubois Street, would they consider putting in, you know, some sort of pass again, like, on the boulevard? Or would we have to come up and cross on the street to head out to Larkie Town? I'm asking because I ride a mountain bike.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm wondering, will it be looped underneath the road?
We looked at this. I don't think we can get underneath the road there. We do have an application in to put a pedestrian bridge next to that so that we can have a protected crossing at the traffic light there. We would redo that little intersection at Parkway and Dubois. We recognize there's a trouble trying to get across Dubois Street at other locations. So that was something Joe and I just put in on Friday.
And it would go the whole way through Larkie Town?
Correct. Yep.
If Sandy Township gets theirs.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Mr. Mayor.
Kathleen Clement, Chestnut Avenue, City. I just wanted to know why, I understand that Hearn's original contract was changed from including a morals clause to having no morals clause, essentially giving him the green light to do whatever he wants, illegal, unethical, and yet be paid till the end of his contract. So he's paid even though he's, if he's terminated?
I'm not aware that there was ever a change in his contract.
So he never had a morals clause?
Not to my knowledge.
Does that make sense?
But not to my knowledge. I didn't draw the contract. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Chris, can you agree? Was there a morals, Debbie McLean, Dubois? Was there a morals clause in the other city manager's contracts?
Again, I'll comment on it, Ms. Jerry.
I didn't draw the contract either.
Okay.
Just so you understand.
I was curious as to whether or not Mr. Suplesio's pay was still being given to him? Or in light of the fact that we just learned that Mr. Nasuti is only making $8,000 for the work he is doing for the city, why is Mr. Suplesio's pay not being held in escrow until this is done and increase Mr. Suples, or Mr. Nasuti's pay for cleaning up all of this?
Again, I'll comment on that, and I'll probably get slam-basted. I don't know that Hearn was convicted of anything.
I didn't say, I didn't say he was. I just said, until this all goes through the legal system.
Right.
I have never accused Hearn of anything.
I know that, but I'm saying, he's innocent.
All I'm saying is, I just, I have felt from the beginning that why is the pay not held in escrow?
Because he's entitled to it. He's not guilty of anything, yet.
But he's under investigation, so.
And that means what?
It just, it seems like it's very disrespectful to Mr. Nasuti that he's in here doing the work and, you know, he's, he's doing all this right now, and he is being transparent. And why is he not being rewarded and shown consideration for what he's doing?
The council is rewarding me and paying me what I think I'm satisfied with. I'm not unsatisfied with how they're treating me. They're treating me fantastic.
So there wasn't increase in his base pay from before till now?
There was, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
There's a meeting scheduled on August 16th, I think it is, with the judge who's going to hear the case and the attorneys. Has city council or anyone else asked that that meeting be postponed?
No, and why would we?
Because you're not ready. Someone's not ready.
Yeah, I think the attorney general's not ready, but.
So there is no request to postpone that meeting? It will be held?
City doesn't, Mr., we don't have any control over that. Judge Saylor would be the one who would determine. He set the date. Either the AG has to ask for a continuance.
Right.
Or Mr. Suplesio's lawyers would have to. I would assume that if they're not ready, they'll get ready.
So as far as you know, there has been no request for?
From us?
From anyone.
No way.
No. That would not be for us to make a request.
Yeah, it's, okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Trump.
Talking about contracts here. Who actually wrote the contract for the city of Dubois with Herm Suplesio?
For sure. Quite frankly, I do not know. I did not do it. I have heard that it was something that Mr. Suplesio drew up, and I also heard that it was done by another attorney. I'm sorry, I don't know that. My only recommendation.
The city council had no, no.
Well, I'm sure they did. I, but I did not draw it. That's your question to me.
Well, I'm just asking, who initiated the contract? Who actually wrote the contract? I wish. You know, since the city is responsible for giving the contract, who?
I really wish Mayor Gilbert was here to answer that. I don't know. I was just a council member back then, and I did vote to pass the contract. But I wasn't involved in that upper echelon at that time, so I don't know that. I mean, not, I mean, anybody else from council coming up?
I don't know exactly, no for sure either.
Yeah.
Tony, did you?
I merely recommended that the contract be for specific work. In other words, because we were doing a PUC rate filing, it was my advice that there should be a rate for services performed for the water department. There should be a contract for the services performed for the sewer department. And then there should be a contract specifically for city manager jobs. And that made it much easier when we, because the question by PUC is how much of the work done by various employees of the city of Dubois goes toward the water department function? How much goes toward sewer? And then how much is regular? Because there are many, many communities that don't operate a water plant and others that do not operate sewer.
Well, was that in the original contract? Or did you add those things in the contract? And did that go back to somebody else?
No, I recommended that the contract that wasn't existed be split.
Recommend that?
I recommended it to council.
That was it?
So we could, we could properly do the PUC filing.
Did you make any changes to the contract, like the morals clause or anything?
Not to my knowledge, sir.
Okay.
No, I wasn't asked to, and it was simply to split them, and council determined the amount of money that would be paid as salary for each of those contracts.
So you're saying there were no moral, were not a moral clause in it?
I have no knowledge of changing anything. That I can tell you. I simply recommended to council, because we had PUC filing, that they be split into three separate contracts.
As the solicitor, your job is to recommend what should be, the way things should be handled. Is it typical for them to disregard your opinion?
It is my job to represent council and the city.
Well, you said that you recommended that they change it, and to your knowledge.
No, she didn't say change it. She recommended to put that in the contract.
But you're, it didn't happen. So I'm asking, is that typical?
No, I didn't say I said that. I said, I recommended that three contracts be implemented. A separate contract for services performed as head of the water department. A separate contract for head of the sewer fund.
And that was done?
That was done. And a separate.
But the morals clause was not put in?
I have no recollection of sewer, of a morals clause being removed.
Okay. Removed or added?
Either one.
Okay.
Does a contract like that typically have a morals clause?
In light of the administrative code, I think that council always has the discretion to determine if there is activity or an action that would warrant dismissal. And I think it's pretty clear, there are felony convictions. Dismissal is warranted.
What about the land purchase where he went against city council's wishes? Not just wishes, but an actual motion and everything like that. And instead of buying 27 acres, he bought seven for the city. Why wasn't something done at that time? That, to me, is irreproachable. That's, that should have been taken care of right then. And I think you should have said to the council, hey, we need to do something about this. He didn't listen to you.
I think that if you read that, it was approved up to 27 acres, right? Is that the way it's worked? No, I'm just saying. I mean, seriously, I mean, that's exactly.
No, let me respond to that. Let me respond to that, sir. If you look at the deeds, I didn't handle them, all right? And the property was brought to Mr. Suplesio first by the realtor, right? And this is what I've been told by the individuals who were involved. And because Mr. Suplesio had been looking for land for quite some times upon which he could build a camp. When the offer was brought to him to purchase all of the property, the realtor mentioned it to him, he mentioned to city council, and you could see it in the minutes, that there is this land that is becoming available. Council directed him to investigate it. Now, at that point, I was not involved in what happened. I understand a third party came in and was willing to purchase it, the other, the other land. Now, I can tell you this. I thought, when I heard about the project and I heard about the possibility of purchasing land and the price per acre, my comment was that it was not in council's business plan. It was way too expensive. The price per acre of this piece of property was well above what we have ever spent, especially because we look only for land around the watershed that we can forest, we can, and there's nothing on there. If you've gone out there, and I have, there's nothing there. The only part that was valuable to the city was the road. And that is, in fact, what council elected to buy. So I don't, I don't have a problem with it. He paid full price for it. The party who paid the other part of it, that the other party paid full price for it. The city, I thought, paid a very hefty price. And to me, it would only have been worth it to get the road. Other than that, I would have counseled the city not to purchase any additional land, and they did not. But that was handled by outside council.
And you stated earlier that the city was really only interested in land that had forest on it. Is that right?
We have historically only been so that, because we can regenerate it, it manages.
Is that one of the reasons you bought that seven acres?
Well, I wasn't happy about the price on the seven acre. I thought, but the city felt it needed an access road to the back of the watershed. And I thought that made sense for that strip of land. And to be able to keep people, there's a gate across it. I understand that it's also used by the neighbor to gain access to his property. I don't know if he pays the city anything for that. That's never been brought to my attention. But I know there's a gate on it. And I think for the protection of the rear of the watershed, it serves a purpose because that's the only way we can access that land. So I didn't have, I could see the purpose for the road parcel. I didn't see the purpose for the remainder of it because it doesn't have a tree on it, to the best of my knowledge.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, folks. SOS.
Ms. Jerry, just a question about a comment you just made. If I understand you correctly, if somebody, and God forbid. If I understand you correctly, if somebody, God forbid, actually, but if somebody is found, you said felony level, and you said you would counsel to terminate such person? Does that mean you would, what kind of advice would you give council as to whether or not we guarantee that fully guaranteed contract meeting? Would your advice be, let's not pay it and let them sue the city for this payment?
I don't think it's fair to ask me to make a public comment about that. We have a man who's innocent until proven guilty. I happen to believe from my contacts with the H.E., they're not going to find any money missing from the city of DuBois.
Which is good news.
Which really should be very good news for everyone. Certainly, you know, something that-
But I'm just curious, because you said if it is a felony-
Well, felonies are very different matters. But I don't see felonies coming out here. I'm sorry, I don't. And I don't think there was probable cause to even file them. And I'll go on record that way. Any other questions?
I do. So having $93,000 in cash of the city's money is okay?
Well-
I mean, to me, he should have been fired right that day.
Well, wait. And I want to, and I think that responds in part to Mr. Meckling's statement. The money was given by waste management. And it's given by waste management, the same amount, to adjoining municipalities. It's given to Sandy Towne. The letter from the representatives of waste management make it very clear that they wanted the money to be used by fire department, for fire department purposes and for city purposes. Now, that money was located in a building that was used by the Community Days Committee. And they kept all receipts there. They kept their monies there. They kept their collections there. The money, and there are accompanying envelopes that will become part of the evidence in the case, where it was leftover money from particular years. And it was being saved for the following year. Because, to be quite frank, the Community Days activities are not funded by collections or donations solely. They are supplemented by what was called the community fund money. So I happen to know that the A.G. was advised that that money existed. And the A.G. did not look in the room where the Community Days activities were conducted. And that means that all the receipts that were kept there were not, thankfully, not confiscated by the A.G. So they remain, and the A.G. was advised that they exist. And that's all I can say right now. Because it's pretty obvious that they exist.
Tony, it's $93,000 cash of the city's money. Whether you call it community money, that should have been in a city checking account or savings account.
Well, it was originally in the checking account. And it was removed for payments that were making cash.
And that's not a terminated law offense?
Held for six weeks before we got it. So somebody knows.
So is it common that the city pays cash for things?
That's not boot money.
I mean, like, is this normal that we pay cash? I mean, because for most business activity, it's a check. So I'm just wondering, is there other instances that we pay cash?
Well, we, the city, did not pay cash. I think there were certain high, I want to say high, well-known special guests, such as ex-dealers, such as, you know, certain acts that demanded to be paid in cash. The same way that the Steelers football team demanded to be paid in cash from the United Way. Do I pay people in cash? No, I don't. And does the city of DuBois pay people for city business? No, they do not. But these individuals required payment in cash. Also, the little girls and boys who carry the banners were paid in cash. The college kids who worked there were paid in cash. Because they put in a lot of time and that. So certainly not, city bills are not paid in cash. This would have been for that amount.
We issue 1099s? Or would they issue 1099s?
No.
Or is it all illegal?
It's not illegal to pay in cash. It's illegal not to report it on your tax return. So, you know, and-
But the end of paying the kids and stuff for the carrying banners, that we still have $93,000 left over?
From year to year, to year to year.
It should not have been in a secured location, like a bank.
I'm not in charge of it. I don't know what to tell you. It is what it is. I'm not in charge.
I don't keep $93,000 in my house.
So, Tony, so you knew that Herm was paying people with cash, like the Stars and all that stuff?
It was well-known. I was never there when he paid them.
We're a city. We need to write checks. We need to send 1099s. That should never happen.
But Community Days is not part of the city-
It certainly is.
That's a true question, sir. But that's a true answer. How then did that money become city all of a sudden? Because I'm confused by the transfer. Ms. Cherry dropped it off to Mr. Nissoudi and presumably the chief of police. Somehow, it's now in a city account. It wasn't city money prior to the-
It's always been community fund money donated by waste management for the purposes. And waste management was very aware of what it was being used for. Why did I want it brought to the city at that moment in time? Because I felt I had enough trail. And I didn't want the Attorney General to confiscate it as they confiscated the other city money that was sitting up there. Or I wanted to make sure it went for city purposes. Or the other money they took when they came in and they did their raid.
So other city money was somewhere else?
There was sitting on, there was other cash on Bobby's desk from donations.
When they came in?
Yeah.
Okay. But can you tell me, like, all of a sudden, it became city property, I guess? But the mayor just said it was not ours. It was community fund money.
I've always identified it as community fund money.
Not under the jurisdiction of the city?
Well, I think it's always been under the jurisdiction of council.
Then we would know that that money was sitting in a safe, wouldn't we?
I think council knew that money was-
Maybe a treasurer would know. Somebody would know.
Community Days asked city council for contributions every year.
I understand that.
It's in the minutes every year.
How did it become our money? The moment somebody took it out of the United Way building, which I still don't understand how that happened, but it got here. Now we're saying it's the city money. It wasn't city money. It was Community Days money, which comes from waste management.
I've always called it community fund money.
But not under the jurisdiction of the city?
And the account that the money was put into is marked for a community fund, correct?
But it's under our control now?
Was it under, was it under the city's E.I.N. number in the bank?
Was it or is it?
Is it now?
Is it, was it? We all know that.
Is it now?
It is now.
It is now. So it can't say money.
There were bank accounts in the name of the volunteer fire department where they kept the money for Community Days. And then there would be checks issued and/or receipts for bills that were paid. And then there was money left over. And it was kept. And that's really all I can tell you. That's what I know occurred. And we wanted to make sure that it was community fund money as opposed to United Way money, because it did not belong to the United Way. I thought I'd made that very clear.
Okay, moving on. Any other questions?
I previously asked how much money was frozen by the A.G. And I was told none. And now the solicitor just said they did confiscate some money?
They took, the money that they took the day they came here, they actually didn't take any, there might have been some cash, Bobby, but it was mostly checks that people donated to the, to this day have never been cashed.
So we had checks that were never cashed, mayor?
Donations. They came in that week.
Oh, I got you.
Week to week. Every Thursday, Friday, whatever day Bobby made the deposit. They came in, took all those checks for that week.
So they confiscated what they saw?
That's exactly correct.
Mr. Mitchell explained that in our previous council.
There wasn't extra cash taken from the United Way by the, or anywhere else by the A.G. So you're just talking about some checks that were-
That's correct.
So not a large amount of money?
Anything else? All right, moving on. First thing, number six, cable franchise, Comcast cable franchise agreement.
Ms. R. Smith, we had Tony look at this at the last meeting for us. I think she's prepared to give her recognition.
Yes, I have reviewed, got line by line over the agreement. One of the things I was concerned about is there was an exclusivity clause that we had to agree that Comcast was the only franchise. And that has a prior agreement that I saw they were the exclusive, but it is not. Under 2.4, the franchise granted to Comcast shall be non-exclusive. And so nothing in this agreement shall affect the right of the city to grant other franchises to construct, operate, or maintain a cable system. And there is also no requirement that a cable company be the sole provider of internet or television services. So there is no prohibition for DirecTV, Hulu, Dish TV. Those do not. However, what there is, under 2.6, is that a requirement that if the city grants a subsequent franchise or other authorization to provide similar wired video services, that when taken as a whole, those contracts not be more favorable than the provisions that we have imposed upon Comcast. Comcast, under the contract, the price that Comcast pays is 5% of the fees they collect. City has a right to inspect their work. They also provide a $10,986 grant and as well as a free cable services to municipal buildings such as the building itself, police stations, fire companies, public work buildings, water and sewer authorities. That amount of cost can be deducted from the 5% franchise fee cap that they pay. There is also, as I said, that one-time $10,986 educational and government channel grant payable to the city for the institution and maintenance of an educational and governmental access channel. Based on repairs to be done, these lines are only to be laid either above ground or below ground, depending on where the other utilities are in that area, on city property. And they have a requirement, if they go in to disturb it, to replace it in the condition in which it was in prior to their entry onto the property, which is obviously a much better situation than we have with National Hill.
So your recommendation?
My recommendation is that the concerns I had have been addressed. And I have no objections to council entering into this agreement.
Council's wishes on the Comcast cable franchise agreement?
I'll make a motion to sign that. Second?
Okay, we have a motion on floor, property second, to go with Solicitor Cherry's advice and agree to the Comcast cable franchise agreement. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion.
Reese Singer?
Yes.
Deeds?
Yes.
Bernardo?
Yes.
Akaba?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes. Number seven, work session. Ms. R. Smith?
Yeah, Councilwoman R. Smith, you want to address that?
Yeah, I mean, I've been to a couple of work sessions and I'm new. And I didn't see where they were really very valuable. Really, all we do is set up an agenda. We can do that through email very easily. And if I want to add something to the agenda, I just email and get it added. I guess I just don't see the purpose of them. And by law, we don't need to have them.
We can have all the information ready by the end of Wednesday. We can email it to everybody. We can have it here in hard copy as well. If you don't want to have the meetings, we can still get you the information.
And they cost money. I mean, we have four or five city employees here, here, at them. Their time could be much better spent doing their job. And they would probably rather do that.
You can schedule them if you need them, had they needed.
Any other question or cause? Pardon me?
If needed, you could have one still, right?
Yeah, it would be an executive session, I guess, to meet on something.
Yeah, that would make more sense.
You know, I think, you know, my comment is, you know, we got this out here to the public now. See if we get any feedback and act on it, enact another meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we brought this up about five months ago. And the feedback we got was completely negative. You know, what are we trying to hide? Why are we canceling? You always did have them. So we kind of threw that out the window. I believe it was Councilwoman Bernardo brought up to quit having the work sessions. And just the feedback we got was, we got slam-basted, actually. So we said, we said no. I mean, we canceled that, so. My only opinion is if the new council gets city in January and wants to do away with them, they can do that on the first meeting here.
Can I make a motion that we discontinue the?
Yes, absolutely.
I'd like to make a motion that we stop the work sessions. I don't see where they're productive.
You mean meeting together work session, but still have emails if there's any?
Yeah, I mean, really, all we do is set an agenda. If you guys have been here, they're in, they don't, I just think you're wasting a lot of employee time. So like I said, I'd like to make that motion, see if I can get a second.
And motion on-
Yeah?
Like I said, I'd like to see, wait till the next meeting and then see if we get any feedback from it.
Okay, motion on die for lack of second, and we'll relook it up. Number eight, requests for council to appoint Robert Burns Jr. to the civil service board, replacing Joe Lozor with his term ending November 5, 2024. Council's wishes.
Motion to approve. Second?
Motion on floor, probably second to appoint Robert Burns Jr. to the civil service board, replacing Joe Lozor with his term ending November 5, 2024. Would it be possible to get a letter or something to Mr. Lozor thanking his years of service?
Yes, sir.
Like, if you would include that in your motion?
Yes.
So we have a motion on the floor, probably second to appoint Robert Burns Jr. and send Mr. Lozor a letter thanking him for his years of service on the civil service board. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion.
Reese Singer?
Yes.
Deeds?
Yes.
Bernardo?
Yes.
Akaba?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes. Authorization and advertising bids for the Cook Hill Waterline Phase One.
Yeah, we've been looking at doing the water lines following the sewer line project. We do have enough funding on hand to do a portion of that. We'll call Phase One, which should be starting at Division Street and Cook Plant Alley. So we'll go up Division Street, half a block to Olive Orient Avenue, Olive North Court, South Court. And those streets will be paved at this time. South Court, and those streets will be paved at this time. We have the design for the back half done, but just looking for funding. Hopefully, we can get that constructed next year. But if I can get your approval to bid out Phase One, do the work, get it paid, hopefully it will be done by October thirty-first and have that completed for the winter.
Council's wishes.
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion on floor, property second, to authorize to advertise for bids for the Cook Hill Waterline Phase One project. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion.
Reese Singer.
Yes.
Deets.
Yes.
Bernardo.
Yes.
Akaba.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes. Resolution number twenty-two-three-oh-three-six-nine DCD multi-model downtown Chilhead.
Yeah, this is the project that Joe and I have been working on with the downtown group for several months now. It's converting the S and T parking lot across the street into better utilization of parking. Right now, we have about forty-five spots over there with some building demolition and reconfiguring. We can get upwards of seventy spots, which should help bring more business downtown. So, and serve the businesses we have downtown already. So if we can get that resolution, Joe's got the grant ready to go, due by the end of this week. So we need that, so Eddie and I can sign the documents as well.
Council's wishes.
Motion to approve? Second.
Okay, motion on floor, property second, to approve resolution number twenty-two-three-oh-three-six-nine DCD multi-model, multi-model downtown Chilhead, again involving the, what we used to call the S and T parking lot over here. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion.
Reese Singer.
Yes.
Deets.
Yes.
Bernardo.
Yes.
Akaba.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes. Number eleven, Sandy Bridge renaming request, Trooper First Class Brad Wilson.
Yeah, the purpose of this agenda item is to seek support to rename the Sandy Bridge in honor of Air Force veteran and state police officer Trooper First Class Brad Wilson. Trooper Wilson was wounded in the line of duty in two thousand thirteen, leaving him a quadriplegic. The request was submitted on behalf of the military order of the Purple Heart and Pennsylvania State Police. And the Sandy Township supervisors voted in support of this at their last meeting on July seventeenth. So we would be voting for support. It is a state road, state-owned bridge, so it will go through the department, but they would like the support of both municipalities with it being on the city township line.
Council's wishes.
I'll make that motion. That's a very good cause.
Yes, second.
Okay, we have a motion on floor, property second, to officially endorse the renaming of the Sandy Bridge for the, for, in the name of Trooper First Class Brad Wilson. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion.
Reese Singer.
Yes.
Deets.
Yes.
Bernardo.
Yes.
Akaba.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes. Number twelve, International Overdose Awareness Day, August thirty-first.
Yeah, this is just awareness of the Awareness Day. Clearfield Jefferson Drug and Alcohol Commission annually puts flags along Beaver Drive, or Liberty Boulevard for the awareness of the overdose epidemic. They'll place the flags after, we have an event, I think, on the twenty-seventh. They will have the flags there, they will maintain the flags and then they will remove the flags.
Council's wishes.
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion on floor, property second, to officially, International Overdose Awareness Day, August thirty-first. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion.
Reese Singer.
Yes.
Deets.
Yes.
Bernardo.
Yes.
Akaba.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes. Chief, anything?
Yes, I do have something. So the police department, as you know, a while back, we started our little drug base unit. So I want to step into a second phase of it, which is basically going to help target the drug enforcement, which is focusing on engaging the citizens and the community by... We started a drug tip hotline. Basically, it's an email address for people to anonymously, you know, give us tips because a lot of people don't want to come to the city bill or even reluctant to call County Control. But it's so important to have the community involvement in this and that's why we started it. We're also going to often have members of the department out, talking to the community, trying to get whatever information we can. We've done, I, I gotta give the guys a kudos. They've done a fantastic job so far with the drug enforcement. We have just, they, they make great headway. This is a second phase. I think it's going to be extremely important because it's just as simple as getting on the email address, boom, shoot the information. And we need it. We, we can't do it on our own. We, we need everybody's help and, but this, again, second phase and if anybody has any ideas or anything like that, because it'll go straight to the narcotics guys. They're gonna be the ones that read it, take care of it, look at it, and respond back accordingly. So if you have any ideas or thoughts, shoot them too. Or call me, you know, I'm all about, you know, our department's head strong about the drug threat now. And we are making headway, believe it or not. It does look like sometimes, I see, in front of your business at two o'clock and more and it's a little rough down there, but this, the people out walking. Yeah, yeah, thank you for the cooperation.
Do you have, do you have a statement ready to present to the press?
I do, I have something I will give them with, with our website on it. It's gonna be, I'm gonna put it on our Facebook as well as our website. It'll have the email address and hopefully the papers and all that can put it out as well.
Is that like nine or twenty-four, like, if I get it tipped at two in the morning?
Yes, you send it in.
It goes to the officer on duty or...
Well, normally, the drug guys, when they come in, they'll look at it, but I'm probably gonna get the supervisors access to it so they can look at it too, at two or three o'clock in the morning. If it's something that needs to happen right now, they can go ahead and act on it. Or if it's something that can wait for the drug guys, they can shoot them with a mobile pen.
Are you gonna have that email I just posted on the, the city's website as well?
Yes, we can do that. If that's all right.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, every avenue I can...
That would be where I would look for it.
Yes, okay, yep, that's what we'll do then. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, sir.
Chief Farrell.
Yes, sir.
Any...
Trees again. I found out that our fifteen trees we're getting from the state, we are not allowed to put on, on public property. I mean, we have to put them on, uh, public property, we cannot put them on private property. So I'm gonna be looking for money for seven trees to put, that I promised to put in the, in the private sector, okay? So I'll get back to you in two weeks. I hope I can find it by then, okay?
How much a tree?
What's that?
How much a tree?
They're about five hundred dollars a tree, which includes the tree, planting the tree, the bag for the tree, trimming the tree at year two, year five, and year ten. So it's, it's a long-term thing. They're about, they're about five hundred dollars a tree, which I know sounds like a lot, but these are twelve-foot trees, they're, you know, they're big trees.
They're big trees or fig trees?
Well, I don't know if we can grow fig trees here. I'll find out. If you want a fig tree, I'll see if I can get it. They're like twelve foot tall, they're, I think, two or two and a half inches around here.
Stop.
Any other?
Nope, I'm done.
Just for...
Yes, Chief, would you be kind enough to share that website right now?
Yes, I'm sorry, I probably should have done that. It's drugtips@duboyspadog. It's pretty simple. Yeah, I know the, the attorney general, or, or, I'm sorry, the district attorney, I'm attorney general, district attorney has the tip line, but sometimes there's days delay and all that before we get it. I want something more immediate that we can get.
Good job, Chief. Thank you so much.
Anything else?
Mr. Farrell.
Yes, just, you know, thanks for, you and your department's doing on the drug scene. It's very important to us, as you know, and many others. So thank you for, you and your department for your time and effort on this. Thank you.
Ms. Cherry?
I have nothing.
Mr. Russell?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Sorry, Bobby, for repeating this. Two fifty-five in front of the high school will be milled and paved July thirtieth into the thirty-first overnight. So hopefully, you'll be out of there before the traffic returns in the morning. Division Street traffic light then, let, the work will resume August seventh on that and be completed by the time the kids come back to school. So hopefully, that neighborhood there is completed. We'll be attending North Central's Funding Focus on August eighth. Gives us a chance to discuss with some of those grant, um, funding sources, our needs and how we can access their opportunities for funding.